About the math five, I think the way you described it, it doesn't sound like any height, regular high school student would be able to take that course if it needed.
No.
Yeah, okay.
If anything, if they weren't to run, we would have to, again, go back to what we were looking at last year and find alternative options for lab school students to take a class that they could partner with.
Okay, and then also the research classes, is there any thought to offer in that type of course within the main high school?
I would jump at the opportunity. If this board would fund a research class for the entire school, it would be a huge, huge gain for this school district.
Or maybe eliminate one course that already is being offered that maybe not.
I was thinking the other way.
Sorry, we don't have unlimited pockets, but yeah.
Or an elective. We can make an elective.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
I mean, we do have the science research class, and so, but we don't have just a, you know, research class just to, for students to really learn. It's much more independent.
If you look at the core foundation of lab school, though, it was designed to be an experimental school where if ideas were effective, they would transcend into the regular school. This is one of those opportunities where that certainly could happen. Once the course was refined, had success, I would certainly encourage it to expand into the rest of the school.
Right, and I think that was part of the committee make up, you know, decision to use the committee last year was, we wanted to see what we could call out into the regular main high school that would be beneficial. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
And thank you for the work of the committee. It sounds like you've been working hard.
So I guess we need to, as a board, have a discussion on, would we approve, although we wouldn't really take any approval action now, this would be part of the budget, maybe put it in their budget allocation when time comes.
Well, yeah, but they have to program. They have to sign up for courses for next year, so we need to.
We would need the approval at this point on the research, the language piece, because that does impact our scheduling, which we're heading into right now, as well as, I'd also add, one other thing is that the committee continues until June with, to address their other issues and concerns that they've talked about, and then they'll report back as well at that time with final recommendations to get started for them next year.
Who's in favor of having a research component and would require a .8 FTE? So, go forward with that, and then, you know, I think contingent on the class size, I mean, yes, we would allow it probably under the policies guidelines, but again, if it was one or two students, we'd have to revisit it. Everybody in favor of that?
Yeah.
So when you're saying in favor, sorry, are you talking about the language aspect of it in lieu of the research, or are you just talking about incorporating the research? I guess I would feel like I would want to have an opportunity for the visitors to speak on anything prior to my personally making a decision on it.
Okay, well, I'm not sure that, I mean, I believe that the committee came forward with this, the recommendation, so unless people are, unless the lab school parents would be opposed to it, I'm not sure. We can, anyone opposed to doing the research component?
Well, are we talking about the language aspect with, because you'd be taking out the language in the research, so I don't know.
Well, the recommendations are in totality, it's not to be separated.
Okay.
That's the recommendation of the committee that I would support moving forward, that meets the desire of the board from a year ago. In addition, it also addresses some of the concern with the math program at this point. These are the components that are structurally required for scheduling. If we do not put something in the place, then we have to decide whether we're going to continue further for another year with what's currently in place and the dilemmas that they will pose going forward. So that's why the board would need to act in totality on this piece, just because this is what goes into place for guidance Scott, as well as Mike Klugman, to be able to address as they start the scheduling process. So you'd really need a motion and a second first to take any type of action, not just a roll call.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, the next item on the agenda was recommend, recognition of visitors who might want to speak on something on the agenda, so, I mean, we've done this in the past, let people speak, and then we can, and then we can.
We can make a motion on the, okay. The next agenda item is, anyone who would like to address the board on any specific agenda item? If you would, please come to the, one of the microphones, state your name and what you'd like to say to the board.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Just pause for a second, Mr. Fishbein, he'll get it.
All right.
Now?
Yep.
Okay, Jonathan Fishbein. One of the, I am very much in favor of the research class. I have great concern about removing the language, and I understand there has to be give and take, but if you remove the language, there are a number of things that need to be addressed from what I've been able to glean. One is that because of the way lab school is blocked, I haven't heard anything, at one point, Jody, I think you said that students would be able to take a lab school, a language of choice, or something like that. Is there any guarantee that when the languages are removed from lab school, they will, with the lab school schedule, that they take as members, as part of the lab school, that they will be able, in those other periods, to get the language class that is skill appropriate for them? In other words, if they're, if they're a second year, third year language student, whatever it is, that they're going to be able to get that language in the language that they, that they want? And I don't know if you can answer that, but.
Yeah, I can, because we looked at that for the student, obviously, the students coming out of middle school are going to be in Spanish too, French too, that we have enough of those sections for the two and three, that in looking at when we currently offer them in the lab school schedules, there will not be a problems with lab school students getting into any of those classes. If they wanted to take, let's say, a Chinese elective or Latin their junior or senior year, and it's offered at a time when, you know, they're in a lab school class, then they may not be able to take that. But in regards to their required language classes, they will be able to take them in one of the times they have available for electives.
Not to push it, but I have to ask, if we have some Chinese students from the middle school, and if we're lucky enough to have Chinese going through, it would seem to me that if we're going to take language out, we, and say to them that, yes, if you join lab school, you'll be able to take language of choice, then that should be there and it should be scheduled so that they can do that. The other concern I have is, and it's my understanding, and I may be wrong on this, and Mike, you can correct me if I am wrong, that the traditional school teaches the two years of language, and lab school does the same two years and three. So the students are about a third of the year behind because of the other work that they're doing, and then at the end of two years, they're two thirds of the year behind, but they make it up by the end of the third year. If you're going to take language out, you're going to have students that you're putting into a regular class that may not be quite ready for that class, because they're a third of a year or two thirds of a year behind, what kind of program is going to be put in place so these students are not, they're not put in a position where they're struggling and through no fault of their own?
So we've also been addressing that through our language supervisor and our language teachers, both within lab school and without, or outside of lab school, and that's an area that we will transition students appropriately. We're not going to put them in a level that's not, they're not able to participate in. So we do have a plan for that.
I didn't think you would, but I had to hear it.
And Jonathan, if I might add, a decision coming at this point also allows the language teachers in lab school at this point to help with that transition as well, because now they'll have from January to June to also assist in that transition.
Okay. As far as the research class goes, there is a great difference between how a math scholar is going to do research, how a scientist is going to do research, how somebody who writes for, let's say, to do research for a novel, or to do scientific research, there are many ways to do it. You can do it either by actually mixing chemicals together, or by going out and looking at what other people have done and putting those studies together. And if we are going to switch, and I think I heard that we're, the possibility was in staffing, one time you might have a science teacher teaching the research class, one time a math teacher, one time an English teacher, I think there needs to be some consistency. One of the things I've noticed, I have sat on two boards now and gone through the papers, one of the things I've noticed is that there are a lot of things that these students could be learning about writing research papers. There's the research component, in other words, what you go into, what you look at, how you look at things, and how you put it together. There's also the writing component, and I'm not sure whether the research class is to teach how to write the research paper, or it's how to teach how to research.
It would be in our discussions in the committee, obviously, we still have to write the curriculum, but it would be a combination of those things. So, for example, in ninth grade, let's say, an English teacher is teaching that, we would be teaching them the skills of research. What do you need to do when you're writing a research paper? They would be doing smaller venues and process approach. By the time they get to, obviously, their senior year, we would want them to be fairly independent and able to target their research toward whatever is of interest to them, hopefully connected to their internship, whether it be mass science, English, social. We've talked a lot about the different ways research can be done, and depending upon if it's from a humanities perspective, a science perspective, it's obviously looks much differently, which that's kind of the purpose of trying to get different teachers of different content areas to teach that curriculum, so students would be exposed to all different types of research throughout their four years.
Is it the intent of the research class to be a class that is more like a lecture class where you listen and you supposedly learn, as opposed to actually hands-on? Because one of the thing about lab school is that it's very much hands-on.
That would be the goal of, I mean, of research. Part of it is still going to be independent, and by the time they're juniors and seniors, most of it should be independent, with guidance, obviously.
Okay. I hate to monopolize, and if there's no one else, if I could go on, I have a few more questions.
Sure, we'll take them.
One of the things about the lab school is that it is very much based on, it's success, I think, and I've now, let's see, Ben graduated two years ago, and my daughter's in it, so it's, I guess this is our fifth year, sixth year, whatever, fifth year, that we've been in lab school. What I've noticed is that I think its success very much is, is founded on the staff that you put in there. And there's a real concern for me, for my family, and I've heard it from other lab school families, as to who is going to be the supervisor, because you're taking.
I think we're delving into, that's a personal matter, and we can't, we're not gonna.
I know you can't respond to it, but I'd like you to at least.
We're not gonna discuss assignments of staff.
No, I'm not asking you to. I'm asking you to at least hear that, that some of the lab school families feel that we need someone like, and I'm not asking, I'm not saying who it should be, I'm saying like some of the past lab school supervisors that you've had, going all the way back to the beginning, but I'm talking about personality, I'm talking about people that have a leadership quality to help these students become leaders in their own right, which is part of what lab school does. The independence, the times that they spend together on projects where they work together, it all has to do, a lot of it has to do with leadership, where they take a student who has never led anything before, and a student, you know, somebody drops the ball, and another student picks it up and says, hey, guys, we gotta do this, and it comes from the top down. So when you're thinking about who you're putting in, please remember that the success of this program, a lot of it, well, yes, it falls on the students, it falls on individual teachers, a lot of it does fall on the supervisor you pick. So we're losing Mr. Mitchell because language goes out, that's a given.
Again, we can't talk any personal matters, and you're mentioning names, which is inappropriate.
Okay, we're losing the current supervisor, that's a given, because language goes out, but please remember to pick somebody like some of the supervisors in the past.
Thank you, thank you for your comments.
I have a.
Let me just, does anyone else wish to address the board, make a comment to the board? Thank you.
The research class, I would, when I hear that, I would imagine it's somewhat of a survey class on research methodology, quantitative, qualitative interviewing, surveys, and that's my vision of what a research class is, you know, what's reliability, what's replication, and those concepts taught in a variety of ways, so, and that's why I think it's so attractive for the general high school population, is what are the different, what's the nature of research, how do you define it, what's, what technique do you use to answer a particular question? That's what I would imagine a research, so I would hope that regardless of the subject area, a teacher has the background and the support to teach that material with his or her particular spin on it, and they bring their strengths and their content area to that, but that's, that's what I assume a research course is.
Yes, absolutely.
I hope that's the vision, I would imagine, you know, and then, then you implement it and enact it through different projects in the lab school method, but when I see a research class, it's, you know, it's not necessarily a standard curriculum, but it covers those topics.
Right, exactly.
Okay, good, I'm glad that's efficient.
Anyone else? Okay. Oh, okay, did you, you wanted to address the board on an agenda item?
Yes, I just.
Yep.
Yes.
If you could state your name.
My name is Steve Gold, and my daughter is in her first year in lab school, and I just wanted to thank Jody and the committee and everybody who was on there. They did a, a great job, I think they really balanced out a lot of the concerns. My daughter loves the lab school language piece, because she's in the class with, she's a freshman, but she's in with sophomores, and she says it's really the only time that they get to kind of, you know, hear from the sophomores how to navigate lab school, how to do a lot of those things. So losing that as a lab school component is something that, you know, she is not happy about, but I think the way that the committee has balanced this, and given, you know, taken that, but given the research component is a really, it's just, it's a very clever way to use the same resources and not, you know, by taking something away, but giving something and enriching the program, and yes, it will be a bad thing to lose that language part, but I think they're overall going to benefit from it, and I think it's, it's a credit to everybody who was on the committee that they're not just trying to look at, you know, here are all the problems, but how can we address these things across the whole high school? I think the remediation policy, being consistent throughout the school, is going to be a plus for the whole school, and I think you don't need to start with, you know, putting caps or minimums or anything like that, just look at the whole thing, and so, it's not perfect, but I think it's going to be a better place where, than where they were, and thank you and everyone.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi. I'm Leah Fishbein, and I am a junior in the lab school. I just had a few questions about the research process. As of now, for the juniors and the seniors, we do the, we are in groups, and it's mixed, and so I was wondering, if we're doing it by grade, that there's, is there still going to be groups, or is the research process going to still work as, if we're in groups?
The committee hasn't gotten into that level of detail in regards to how groups and things would be structured, but we have talked about the ability to have other faculty involved and to have kids working with other students as well through the process, so if that's something that, through the work of the curriculum committee, and that's important to maintain, then we can try and find a way for that to happen.
Yeah, there will be a certain amount of transition time, because if you're in that 11th, 12th grade year versus someone coming in the 11th grade year, that's something that they will have to consider as they go through with any type of transition.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on, item number eight.
We got a, we got a poll out of those.
I was gonna do that after you, all right. All right, do I have a motion to?
I'll move the two action items.
Move the two action items?
Second.
That's a first and a second, any further discussion on them? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions that carries? Item number eight, finance, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following founding, it's action items A through E.
Some of.
That's a first and a second, any discussion?
Just to thank you for those donations, I think it's great, you know, whether they're school groups, or sports groups, or whomever, you know.
We're very fortunate in terms of community support.
And in Mr. Conley, who's donated before.
A gentleman down from Virginia, I think he is, or Maryland, was he a student here at one time, is, is that his connection to?
I, I forget what, he has some connection, but the fact that he continues, he obviously knows the middle school TV.
Oh, it's one of our, it's the father of one of our teachers.
Oh, father of one of our teachers, oh, okay. I knew there was a connection somehow.
I actually have a question, the standard workday resolution, is that just something that has to be, is that new, or is that re-approved?
Judy, yeah, it's just a paper location.
It's an administrative requirement of the New York State Employees Retirement System that the board officially specify what the standard day is. Retirement system needs to be able to calculate service credit for employees, and they can't do that unless it's an established day. The titles that they had requested vary, they're not all full-time. For Bethlehem, they're mostly full-time, so it really is a formality where they need to have that resolution.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions that carries? Item number nine, first and professional personnel, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following instructional, instructional staff action items A through F.
Some of. Second.
That's a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions that carries?
Just appreciate some people with 24 and 25 years of service retirement.
Yes, yeah, and we recommend, we appreciate their service. Support personnel, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items A through D.
Some of.
That's a first and a second.
Was there?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, that's a first.
Sorry.
Second.
I only said a once.
All right, it's a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, any opposed, any abstentions that carries? And again, recognizing an employee there with 29, 34 years. Item number 11, correspondence for action, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following correspondence, action items A through B.
Some of.
That's a first and a second, any discussion? I do want to just mention, B is an amendment to Dr. Douglas's contract where he will be receiving a 1.5% raise and a 2% raise, which is in line with what we had provided to the unionized staff, and in fact, it's less than that. And we thank him for his service. Any further discussing, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions that carries? At this time, we would recognize anyone in the audience that would like to address the board on a non-agenda item. If you could state your name, Judy.
Judy? Hey, I was, I'm curious, I, I'm kind of catching up, I've been really busy, and I've noticed.
We missed you.
Sure.
Now, yeah.
I've noticed that you guys had some activism requests for the substation over here. What was the basis of your concerns for that substation? The electric national grid substation?
What do you mean by activism? I guess I'd ask.
You were requesting people to go to the town to basically, you know, come out, you know, you guys all came out against the installment of the substation, national grid property over here at Preskey's property.
Officially, we haven't come out one way or the other yet, but we did feel that we needed to notify individuals into the district in regards to it. The board did authorize me to go speak, not necessarily in favor of it, but unfortunately, that meeting has been canceled at this point and moved off to a later date.
Because I thought I watched stuff on video, thank you very much for doing that, and I thought I heard pretty much, oh, I think everyone, expressing some concerns over it. What were the basis of your concerns?
The location to the high school, into Eagle Elementary.
Just by sight, that you could see it?
No, just.
Radiation?
Proximity.
Do you know what these things do? Do you know what Wi-Fi does? You're exposed to a lot more radiation from Wi-Fi and cell phones and every other device, electronics that you're surrounded by. I'm probably being exposed to EMFs right now from this electronic here than you are from, there's no one that lives next door to that, and I guess I'd want to let, make sure you guys know, you use a lot of electricity here, and there's a brownout issue in this community, you know, especially in high heat energy demands, when there's a, you know, a lot of people using air conditioning in the summertime and stuff, there's a lot of brownouts in this area. So I was just curious what the, if it was based on, you know, just fear, not knowing the facts, you know, but just.
Look, if I can state a couple things, first of all, it's core residential area, not an industrial area. That's a concern for the district and the board. Seeing how we face our own issue with core residential ZBA changes and being denied, we also have a vested interest of whether or not the core residential around the high school and Eagle Elementary should remain intact. In addition, there's noise issues that are potentially within the zone of the location of that power substation, the size, and additionally, lack and really minimal notification, if best, that as we just found out today, they only gave us four days to respond. We just found out today from Niagara Mohawkes, they've been in discussions with the town for well over 11 months.
They own the property already, right?
But it's kind of shocking that you're having discussions for well over 11 months, and on your application, you do not even list an elementary school being within 500 feet, which is their safety zone. They do acknowledge that there are certain zones within safety, whether it's EMF, safety and security issues.
There are standards for how much EMF can be within a certain range of residential, there are some standards.
But to be told five, basically five days, four days, right before a major yearing on potential consideration, I think the board had some concerns, I would have some concerns, and then also, the inability to recognize that Eagle Elementary is not even on their application is a major concern. In addition to the ripping apart of Van Dyke Delaware Ave during school sessions are also major concerns, and yet there's been no discussion with the school district or its local neighbor, and when we went through it, we were obligated to notify everybody within a 200 to 500 foot radius, and we did that months, almost a month and a half ahead. We had four days.
Well, I, listen, I'm all for full disclosure, I really am, and I like transparency and things like that.
So there's concerns, we just don't know everything about it, but our community has been very vocal on it, and they have concerns.
Well, I, and I think, as I understood it, the substation is in order to, you know, those are high energy, they actually upped, they just upped to how much energy is coming through those lines, through a big public service thing, improvement project last year, and they, they, in order to get Vista online and start expanding, which you guys have a, how many year pilot agreement with Vista, where you don't, you get your payments instead of taxes, you, they need to have that step down in order to transmit energy to that area, it's just not capable of, the capacity is just not there currently, and I understand that, but you already have some kind of commitment in the past where you said, we are going to support the Vista project by giving up our tax revenue, but you're against how they're going to get that. I'm just, I'm just a little bit confused what the, whether there was, you know, I, I.
I believe that they haven't fully explored all their other options, and they're just saying, this is where we're putting it. We felt we needed to say, we need to have more information about it, and we're not supportive of it at this point, the way it's been presented to us.
Well, I just wanted to, you know, I felt, I felt like if it was environmental, you know, I can understand there's, you know, if it's a project, there's always ways around, making that transparency and working around, making that, getting that project going so it doesn't disrupt the school and things like that, but if it was an environmental concern, I certainly would be more concerned about, you know, extreme sources of particulates such as, you know, the outdoor wood boiler here, you know, or something like that, because here, you know, or something like that, because I've got, I've seen a wood boiler saturate Eagle Elementary's playgrounds with wood smoke, which causes asthma attacks and heart attacks and strokes. Smoke causes cardiovascular effects. And I just thought, whoa, this is just a disconnect, especially since we all walk around with these. And so I wanted to make sure it wasn't an environmental concern, because the facts just really aren't there to support that. And I was just curious what's going on with that.
Thank you, Judy.
Jeff Whitman, just a quick comment, and I don't think I'm going to be crossing a boundary when I say this, but you tell me, I'm wearing several hats, I'm on the committee that, a superintendent's committee that helped put together the plan that you've just approved. And I recognize we have a way to go, and I will be very careful not to mention names, but as a committee member, I feel a tremendous sense of relief that the vote has been taken. And as a lab school parent, I feel a heavy heart, because I want to just say that the la, the language faculty have not, I know they're not going away, they're not going away, and our kids are still going to be able to learn from them with the new plan. But they were much more than language teachers to our kids. They traveled with them, they crafted their research projects with them, and they deserve the deepest gratitude from the board and from us as parents, because they've been amazing.
Thank you for your comments. All right, moving on. Future meetings and events, our next Board of Education meeting is January 7, 2015. That will be held at the Hama Girl Elementary School, with a 7 o'clock start, 6 o'clock for executive session. The meeting after that is Wednesday, January 21, again, at 7:00 PM. That will be at the Glenmont Elementary School with a 6 o'clock executive session. And then our first meeting in February is February 4, and it will be back here at the High School Library Media Center, Center at 7:00 PM. I do not believe there's any reason to go back into executive session. Okay?
We're adjourned.
That's a first?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
I thought you wanted to go back in.
He did.